Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Krishna, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Krishna. Hare Krishna, Sudhanapraman, solid devotees, thank you for joining in. We'll start with the prayers. Om Jnana Thimranandasya, Jnana Jana Shalakaya. Chakshurun Militam Yena, Tasmay Sri Guraveen Namaha. Sri Chaitanya Manoh, Bishtham Stapi Tom, Yena Bhutale, Swayam Rupa Khada Mayyam Dada Tishpa Padantitam. Vandeham Sri Guru, Sri Uta Patakamalam, Sri Gurunvaishnavamcha. Sri Rupam Sagrachatham Sahavana Gunathan Vitam Pam Sajeevam. Sadhvaitham Savadutam Prichinasa Hitam. Sri Krishna Chaitanya Devam Sri Radha Krishna Paadhahn. Sahavana Lalita Sri Vishakhan Vitamcha. Namom Vishnu Paadhaya Krishna Preethaaya Bhutale. Shrimate Bhaktive Ramta Swami Niti Namine. Namasthe Saraswate Deve Gauravani Pracharinne Nirvishe Shoshumyavadi. Paschatyar Deshatarine Namomahavatanyaya. Krishna Prema Prathayate Krishnaaya Krishna Chaitanya Namni Gauravodushe Namaha. Panchatatva Atmakam Krishnam Bhakta Rupa Swarupakam. Bhakta Avataram Bhakta Kyam Namami Bhakta Shaktikam. He Krishna Karuna Sindho Dina Bando Jagatpate. Gopisha Gopika Kanta Radha Kanta Namosute. Taptaka Anchanagaurangi Radhe Vrindavanishwari. Rishavanoosute Devi Pranamami Hari Priye. Vanchakalpatarubyascha Agrapasindubya Evacha Patita Nam Paavani Bhyo Vaishnavebhyo Namonamaha. Jai Sri Krishna Chaitanya Prabhu Nityananda. Sri Advaitakadha Dharashri Vasadi Gaurabhaktavrinda. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Gurave Gaurachandraaya Radhikaya Dralayee. Krishnaaya Krishna Bhaktaaya Tatbhaktaaya Namonamaha. Mukam Karoti Vachalam Angum Langay Te Girim. Yatkrpaatamam Vandeham Sri Gurundinatarinam. Paramanandavadavam Sri Krishna Chaitanya Mishvaram. Harihi Om Tatsat. Hare Krishna, Sudhanapraman Stol, thank you all for joining in. So, Net of Instruction, we saw the first verse of Net of Instruction is talking about a person who actually controls the urges. Vacho Vegam, Manasakroda Vegam, Jivva Vegam, Udarupashtavegam. Etan Veganya Vishaheta Diiraha Sarvam Apimam Prativimsa Shisyat. Somebody who is controlling the urges of the tongue, belly, genitals, of the speech, anger and mind. All these six things, such a person can make disciples all over the world. So, it was the first one and we saw how the first disciple is our own mind and the senses. And then the second words, we were seeing about how, what we should, what are the six things that kill devotional service? Or that prevent our advancement in devotional service. What are those Atyaahara, Praya Shscha, Prajalpanyama, Agrah, Janasangam, Lawliam? These are the six things that actually, they actually impede our advancement in devotional service. So, what are those things? Atyaahara means to over endeavor for things, to overeat. Praya Shscha means to go overboard in anything, to acquire some material things. And then Prajilpa, Prajilpa means talking useless things such as gossip etc. Niyama Agrah means, we saw two things. Niyama Agrah means to reject rules and regulations that help us advance in devotional service. And also Niyama Agrah, that means becoming two attacks to following rules and regulations and not for spiritual advancement. And then Janasangascha, Janasanga means taking association of materialistic people. Lawliam, Lawliam means to greed, to be greedy for materialistic things. Shatbir Bhaktir Vinashati, these are the six things that actually impede devotional service. And then we were, we were seeing in the first couple of paragraphs, Prabhupada was actually talking about the three energies of the Lord, Gantranga Shakti, the Bhairanga Shakti and the Tattastha Shakti. So, we are the Tattastha Shakti of the Lord. In that way, we have a choice whether we want to engage in the service of the Lord or we engage in the service of Maya. And then Prabhupada described, differentiated the words between Mahatma and Duratma. Mahatma means one who is engaged in service of the Lord. Duratma is the opposite of Mahatma, which means one is simply engaged in satisfying one's own mind and senses. And hence such a person is called a cripple minded person, right? Duratma. And then we, Prabhupada also spoke about the three kinds of clashes. Adidevi Clasha, Adibothic Clasha and Adidevi Clasha. So, these are the three clashes, that means caused by the sufferings caused by the mind. Sufferings caused by other living entities and suffering caused by the divine personalities like the devatas, right? So, those kind of things are the real problems of life. And then the four problems which are, which are to be cured only by, by the human form of life. They are Janma, Mrtu, Jara and Vyadi, right? These things, one can think of all these things, so how to get out of the entangling of the body etc. Only in the human form of life like that. And then, then the difference between animal and human being is that the animals also do mating, sleeping, mating and defending. We also do eating, sleeping and mating and defending. But if we restrict ourselves only to that, then we are only two-legged animals, right? And then Prabhupada gives a very beautiful example here of how, if there is some supply of food, animal will come and take only as much as it wants and it go and it will go away. Whereas a human being will always endeavor to collect more goods, to eat too much, to carry for the future also like that. That is the tendency of human being, right? So, how did we end, we ended this session by saying that as human beings, we should engage in plain living and high thinking. Simple living and high thinking, alright. So, let's move forward, if any devotee wants to read, then we can, we can continue reading. Okay, once again. Yeah, so from human life, human life is meant for God realization and the human being is given higher intelligence for this purpose. Those who believe that this higher intelligence is meant to attain a higher state should follow the instructions of the vedic literature. Right? In order to attain the purpose of the human form of life, we have to, we have to follow the instructions of the vedic literature. You also saw how by study of the vedic literature, what are we doing? We are purifying our intelligence. By purifying the intelligence, by taking the instructions from the higher authorities, what are we trying to do? We are trying to keep our mind and senses under control. And this is the first step that will give real knowledge, a real meaning to our life. By taking such instructions from higher authorities, one can actually become situated in perfect knowledge and give real meaning to life. In Shrimad Bhagavatam 1.2.9, Sri Sutta Goswami describes the human dharma in this way. Dharmasya hi appavargasya, narto artha yopa kalpate, narthasya dharmakantasya, kamo labhayahis brataha. All occupational engagements, dharma are certainly meant for ultimate liberation. They should never be performed for material gain. Furthermore, one who is engaged in the ultimate occupational service, dharma should never use material gain to cultivate sense gratification, right? So, we saw how as human beings, what is our, what is our role, right? As human beings, we need to try to get out of this material world. Not that we try to, try to usurp as much as possible in getting all of the things of this material world. So, what should be our consciousness? Our consciousness should be utilized everything in the service of the Lord. Whatever has been given to us by the grace of the Lord, we utilize everything in the service of the Lord. And that is dharmahi appavargasya. And that kind of dharma, when we perform dharma in that consciousness, then appavargasya. What is appavarga? Appavarga means paavarga, it actually refers to bhaya and then it has vibeti, vibharti, right? And then bhaya and then finally mrtu, right? So, this, this dharmasya appavargasya, appavarga, right? Bhaya vibeti and finally mrtu, right? In order to get out of that, what are we supposed to do? We are supposed to not engage in sense gratification, but we are supposed to engage in the, in our dharma. And how should we perform that dharma? Akamo labhayahis brataha. They should not be performed for material gain, they should be performed only for spiritual advancement. Alright, so let's move ahead. Okay, the first step, anyone wants to read can raise your hand and then we can continue. Okay, until then I'll read, oh here, yeah, I hope you will see the screen, okay. The first step, okay Saravagopesh Shrimadaji, go ahead. The first step in human civilization from there.
The first step in human civilization consists of occupational engagement performed according to the scriptural injections. The higher intelligence of a human being should be trained to understand basic dharma. In human society, there are various religious conception. Characterized as Hindu, Christian, Hebrew, Mohammed, Buddhists and so on. For without religion, human society is no better than the animal society. As stated about dharmasya hi appavargasya, narto atcho pakalpate. Religion is meant for attaining emancipation, not for getting bread. Sometimes human society manufactured a system of religion aimed, so-called religion aimed at material advancement. But that is for, from the purpose of true dharma. Religion entails understanding the laws of God. Because the proper execution of these laws ultimately leaves one out of material entanglement. That is the true purpose of religion. Unfortunately, people accept religion for material prosperity because of atyaahara or an excessive desire for such prosperity. True religion however instructs people to be satisfied with the bare necessity of life while cultivating Krishna consciousness. Even though we require economic development, true religion allows it only for supplying the bare necessities of material existence. Jivasse Tathva Chignyasa. The real purpose of life is to inquire about the absolute truth. It is our endure, prayasa, it's not to incur about the absolute truth. We will simply increase our endure to satisfy our artificial needs. A spiritual aspirant should avoid mundane endure.
So, we're talking here about prayasa. Prayasa means over endeavoring for material things. So, our spiritual aspirants should not avoid mundane endeavor and should work for advancement in spiritual life. Yes, Madhaji, go ahead, another impediment.
Another impediment is Prajalpa. Unnecessary talking, when we mix with a few friends, we immediately begin unnecessary talking. Sounding just like a croaking thoughts. If we must talk, we should talk about the Krishna conscious moment. These outside of the Krishna conscious moment are interested in reading heaps of newspapers, magazines and novels. Solving crossword puzzles, undoting, and doing many other nonsense things. In this fashion, people simply waste their valuable time and energy. In the western countries, old men retire from active life, play cards, fish, watch television and debate about useless social political schemes. All these and other frivolous activities are included in the Prajalka category. Intelligent person interested in Krishna consciousness should never take part in such activities. Janasanga refers to the associating with people, persons, not interested in Krishna consciousness. One should strictly avoid such association. Narutamataasa Takura has therefore advised us to live wildly in the association of Krishna conscious devotion. Bhakta Sanyevaasa. One should always engage in the service of the Lord, in the association of the Lord devotees. Association with those engaged in similar.
Yeah, association with those engaged.
Similar, engaged in similar line of business is very conducive to advancement in that business. Consequently, materialistic person from various association and claps to enter their endures. Endures, for example, in the business world, we find such institution as a stock exchange and chamber of commerce. Similarly, we have established the International Society of Krishna Consciousness to give people an opportunity to associate with those who have not forgotten Krishna. The spiritual association offered by our risk on development is increasing day by day. Many people from different parts of the world are joined this society to awaken the dormant Krishna consciousness.
Hare Krishna, thank you Madhaji. Hare Krishna, thanks. Dandapraman. Hare Krishna, Dandapraman. So, here Prabhupada is talking about the importance of association, right? Prabhupada says that, you know, if, even if people want to advance in material life, they take the association of devotees, like you have the Chartered Accountant Society, you have the Institute of Doctors, right, where they come together to discuss what is the latest update, what is happening in their field? And then in this way, they gain knowledge about their own fields like that. Those who want to advance in spiritual life, we all, Prabhupada says, he's established international study of Krishna consciousness. For people to come, associate with each other, practice the principles of, you know, the chanting Hare Krishna Mantra, studying Bhagavad Gita, Bhagavatam, A B C D square formula. Doing all of that in the association of devotees will enable one to, to do Bhakta Sanyevaasa. That means to become Krishna conscious devotees in the association of those who want to progress in Krishna consciousness. Why are they talking about this? Janasanga, right? Because if we associate with people who are worldly minded, then what will happen to us? We will also try to only attain material success. I want to attain this, not attain that etc. It is okay to have the ambition, but we need to know how to prioritize and we also need to know how to make a distinction. To not be, to be balanced Yuktaahara, Vihara Se Yukta Chescheche Karma Sho. Yukta Swapnava Bodasya Yogobaavat Duukaha. So, we need to be regulated in our life and we can best be regulated. And they are in the association of those who are already regulated in their life. In this way, seeing them perform chanting during the Brahma Murtah or seeing them perform the study of Bhagavad Gita, seeing them preaching, we also get encouraged to perform these activities. And in this way, we avoid Janasangasya and what we'll do Satovritte. Satovritte means we engage in association with senior devotees and such association will help us advance in spiritual life. Alright, let's move forward. Shila Bhaktisiddhanta, okay Sudha Madhaji, go ahead. Shila Bhaktisiddhanta Saraswati Chakur. Sudha Madhaji.
Am I audible, Madhaji?
Yes, yes, now you're audible, go ahead.
Shila Bhaktisiddhanta Saraswati Takura writes in his Anuritthi commentary that too much endeavor to acquire knowledge on the part of mental speculators or dry philosophers falls within the category of atyaahara collecting more than needed. According to Shrimad Bhagavatam, the endeavor of philosophical speculators to write volumes, to write, yeah, to write volumes of books on dry philosophy devoid of Krishna, dry philosophy devoid of Krishna consciousness is entirely futile. The work of karmies who write volumes of books on economic development also fulfills, also falls within the category of atyaahara. Similarly, those who have no desire for Krishna consciousness and who are simply interested in, in, who are simply interested in possessing more and more material things either in the shape of scientific knowledge or monetary gains are all, Madhaji little bit, yeah, are all included under the control of atyaahara. Karmies labor to accumulate more and more money for future generations only because they do not, they do not want, do not know their future position. Interested only in getting more and more money for their sense gratitude, for their sons and daughter, for their sons and grandsons, such foolish persons do not even know what their position is going to be in the next life. There are many incidents that illustrate this point. Once a great karmi accumulated a vast fortune for his sons and grandsons, but later according to his karma, he took his birth in a cobblers house located near the building, which in his previous life, he had constructed for his children. It so happened that when this very cobler came to his former house, former house, his former sons and grandsons beat him with shoes. Unless the karmies and gyanies become interested in Krishna consciousness, they will simply continue to waste their life in fruitless activities. Accepting some of the scriptural roots and regulations.
Hare Krishna, Madhaji, once again, we just.
Thank you Madhaji.
The previous topic will just complete and then we'll go. So, next topic is Niyama Agrah. But before that, what are we talking about here? Janasanga, Janasanga means if we spend our entire life accumulating wealth, accumulating properties, accumulating academic education and lives in only with such people, then what happens? Our life, our next janma, or our next life will be based according to whatever activity is janma and karma. You know karma and that means activities and desire that we do currently, right? Because we associate with certain people because we want to develop in that particular line. So, again we will get a body which is in those lines only, right? That's why Prabhupada is very, very clearly saying here, unless one actually comes out of this propensity for atyaahara, Prajalpa, then what happens? His entire life will become a waste, right? Because it engaging in fruitless activities, right? So, in this way, so the first three things are covered here, right? Atyaahara, Praya Shscha, Prajalpa. Three activities have been covered, now we are going to the next activity which is Niyama Agrah. So, in this we saw, there are two types of Niyama Agrah, right? Niyama Agrah, that means, agrah means to have an interest or a taste, right? So, Niyama Agrah means I'm interested to follow the rules and regulations, but I don't intend to do it to attain Krishna prema, right? I just do it as a tick mark exercise, right? Because I feel like doing it. That is also under, and are coming out of the mind only, right? And other thing is Niyama Agrah. Agrah means to completely reject that I don't want to follow any of these rules and regulations. Why should I follow? So, in that way, both are wrong, but we need to follow the rules and regulations with the understanding that these rules and regulations are regulatory principles of freedom. They are going to help me get to a better life, they are going to help me advance in spiritual life. So, with that intention and with that knowledge, if one practices these regulated principles, then it will be a success, yes. So, Sudha Madhaji, you can continue, you can do Niyama Agrah and then Nagkishwarimadhaji can read, yes Madhaji.
Hare Krishna, Pranam, Dandapraman. Accepting some of the scriptural rules and regulations for immediate benefit as utilitarians, utilitarians advocate is called Niyama Agrah and neglecting the rules and regulations of the shastras which are meant for spiritual development. Is called Niyama Agrah.
Madhaji, you see on the previous word, if you see here, this Niyama Agrah has got a line on top of the A, that means Niyama Agrah. That means, Niyama Agrah means we follow the rules, but neglect the spirit of the rule. And here is Niyama Agrah, that means we don't follow the rules at all. So, you can see that difference, okay Madhaji, go ahead.
The word agrah means eagerness to accept and agrah means failure to accept. By the addition of either of these two words to the word Niyama, rules and regulations, the word Niyama Agrah is formed. Thus, Niyama Agrah has a twofold meaning that is understood according to the particular combination of words. Those interested in Krishna consciousness should not be eager to accept rules and regulations for economic advancement. Yet, they should very faithfully accept scriptural rules and regulation for the advancement of Krishna consciousness. They should strictly follow the regulatory principles by avoiding illicit sex, meat eating, gambling and intoxication. One should also avoid association with Maya Vadi, who simply blaspheme Vaishnava devotees. Bukti, Bukti Kamis who are interested in material happiness. Bukti Kamis who desire liberation by merging in the existence of the foremost absolute Brahman. And Siddhi Kamis who desire the perfection of mystic yoga practice are classified as atyaaharis. To associate with such persons is not at all desirable. Desire to expand the mind by perfecting mystic yoga, merging in the existence of Brahman or attaining whimsical material prosperity are all included within the category of greed, lawliya. All attempts to acquire such material benefits or so-called spiritual advancement are impediments on the path of Krishna consciousness. Should I continue, Madhaji?
Yes, Madhaji, you see, this are all going to talk about atyaahara only. So, by this, that means we are, we are actually doing Niyama Agrah. That means we are doing the following of the spiritual rules and regulations, but we still have atyaahara in our mind. This is called Niyama Agrah. That means we are following rules and regulations, but we are not having the spirit of the following the rules and regulations in our mind. We are not following that, you're still doing atyaahara, yes Madhaji, go ahead.
Modern warfare waged between capitalists and communists is due to their avoiding the advice of Shri La Rupa Goswami regarding atyaahara. Modern capitalists accumulate more wealth than necessary and the communists envious of their prosperity want to nationalize all wealth and property. Unfortunately, the communists do not know how to solve the problem of wealth and its distribution. Consequently, when the wealth of the capitalist falls into the hands of the communist, no solution results. Opposed to these two philosophies, the Krishna conscious ideology states that all wealth belongs to Krishna. Thus, unless all wealth comes under the administration of Krishna, there can be no solution to the economic problem of mankind. Nothing can be solved by placing wealth in the hands of the communist or the capitalist. If a hundred dollar bill is lying on the street, someone may pick it up and put it in his pocket. Such a man is not honest. Another man may see the money and decide to let it remain there, thinking that he should not touch another's property. Although the second man does not steal the money for his own purposes, he is unaware of its proper use. The third man who sees the hundred dollar bill may pick it up, find the man who lost it and deliver it to him. This man does not steal the money to spend for himself, nor does he neglect it and let it lie in the street. By taking it and delivering it to the man who has lost it, this man is both honest and wise. Simply transferring well, okay Madhaji, thank you, Hare Krishna.
Very good, yeah. So, this is, this is the intelligent person, what does he do? He neither steals the money because he knows nothing belongs to him. Ishavasi Vidham Sarvam Yatkanchajugat Yamjugat, everything belongs to the supreme lord. Secondly, he does not leave it also and go, right? Because he knows proper utility for this, right? So, he neither spends it for himself, nor does it allow it, allow it to, just stay on the street. Because that is lots of resources getting wasted, but what does he do? He ensures that the resources reach the right person at the right time, so that it can be engaged in the service of the Lord. And that is what is the, is the, is the attitude of a devotee, right? Because he knows that everything belongs to the supreme personality of godhead and then everything belongs to the supreme personality of godhead and hence has to be used in the service of the supreme lord like that, alright. So, let's move forward, I think we'll finish this, how much more is left? Okay. Okay, fine, so let's, let's continue this tomorrow then. Today we are on Thursday, so tomorrow we will finish verse number two. So, here, what are we trying to understand here? We're trying to understand that everything is, is the property of the Lord and everything has to be utilized in the service of the Lord. So, when that foundational principle is not clear, yet we perform those rules and regulations, then it is actually not going to yield the desired success, right? So, tomorrow we will continue this discussion, Prabhupada is going to talk about how the capitalists and the communists, they all have different ways of, different ways of sense gratification, right? Some are saying, no, no, we should not be, we should not be, we should not have a central power. Every, it should be distributed amongst all the people. And some others say, no, 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 there should be a central government where all the funds have to be deposited there, right? So, depending on what is, what is sense gratification for them, each one comes up with their own, their own methods. And that is why Prabhupada mentions in the Bhagavad Gita 5.29 also, that no amount of this kind of resolutions and meetings which are set up by human beings, without following the principles of Krishna consciousness will be successful, right? He says peace formula is what? Bhoktaram Yajna Tapasam, Sarva Lokam Maheshvaram, Sooraram Sarva Bhutaanam, Yatva Amam, Shankim Richati. So, there can be peace not because of, not because of capitalism or communism, but there can be peace only when there is Krishna consciousness. Because there is actual distribution of wealth for the pleasure of the supreme lord and used for those purposes. Alright, so let's go ahead with our Bhagavad Gita. Om Namoh Bhagavate Vasudevaya. Om Namoh Bhagavate Vasudevaya. Om Namoh Bhagavate Vasudevaya. So, yesterday we have, we continued, we continued with our chapter number two. For the Bhagavad Gita, we continued with chapter number two, we studied from, you know, they were, wherein Krishna is starting to describe, right? Asochanandvasochastva Pragnavadamchabhashase, Gataasun Agatasumcha Namushochanti Pandita. Right, wherein Krishna is telling Arjuna, you're a fool number one, because you're actually worrying for things which are not worth. You're not worth it like that. And then Krishna goes ahead and talks about the difference between the body and the soul. How the body is always perishable, the soul is never perishable, the soul is eternal. And then he also talks about the soul and the super soul, right? What did he say, talk about the soul and the super soul? Nityo Nikyanam, Chetanas Chetananaam, Eko Bahunam Yo Vidadhati Kaman, right? So, there is one, one maintainer of all of the living entities and then all of the other living entities are also eternal, but they are maintained by this supreme personality of godhead who is the Nityo Nikyanam, Chetanas Chetananaam. And one is Bahunam, one is maintaining everybody, right? And then, and then we went on to those verses like. and then you saw So in this way, how the, how within the same body, there are so many changes? From childhood to youth to old age and to dwindling and then finally to death. So a sober person is not bewildered by such a change like that we saw. And then for the soul, there is neither birth nor death at any time. So even when the body dies, right? When, when the body even something strikes the body and the body is subject to death, even then we know that the soul is not subject to change because the soul is simply going to take another body at the time of death like that. Alright, so let's now start with verse number twenty-one. Text number twenty-one, let me share my screen. Yes, text number twenty-one. Nagavani Mathi, go ahead. Yes, Mathi, go ahead. Are you able to unmute? Hare Krishna. Okay, Rohini Mathi, go ahead. Translation
Pranam, Mathi.
Hare Krishna, pranams.
Oh Partha, how can a person who knows that the soul is indestructible, eternal, unborn and immutable kill anyone or cause anyone to kill purpose? Everything, everything has its proper utility and a man who is situated in complete knowledge knows how and where to apply a thing for its proper utility. Similarly, violence also has its utility. And how to apply violence rests with the person and knowledge. Although the justice of the peace awards capital punishment to a person condemned for murder, the justice of the peace cannot be blamed because we orders violence to another person according to the codes of justice. In Manus Amhita, the law book for mankind, it is supported that a murderer shouldn't be condemned to death. So that in his next life, he will not have, sorry, should be condemned to death. So that in his next life, he will not have to suffer for the great sin he has committed. Therefore, the king's punishment of hanging a murderer is actually beneficial. Similarly, when Krishna orders fighting, it must be concluded that violence is for supreme justice and thus Arjuna should follow the instructions. Knowing well that such violence committed in the act of fighting for Krishna is not violence at all because at any rate the man or rather the soul cannot be killed. So for the administration of justice, so-called violence is permitted. A surgical operation is not meant to kill the patient but to cure him. Therefore, the fighting to be executed by Arjuna at the instruction of Krishna is with full knowledge. So there is no possibility of sinful reaction. Hare Krishna.
Hare Krishna, thank you, Mathi. So here, Prabhupada is, in one of his lectures, Prabhupada gives a very, very beautiful analogy. He's talking about the soldier of a country, right? He goes to the border at the time of the war. India-Pakistan war, he kills many, many of the Pakistani soldiers, but he is given an award. He is given a medal, right, for killing. But if the same person comes home and kills his neighbor because of some fight, then he'll be put behind the bars, right? So fighting per se is not bad, right? The soldier is also fighting and this person also fighting and the same person is fighting in his home also or with his neighbor also. But what is the intent? In the first case, he is doing it with the permission of the government for the benefit of the government. And so the government recognizes him and rewards him. But in this second case, where he does according to his own mental speculation, he just goes ahead, fights with somebody and kills somebody, then he will be put behind bars or he will have to suffer the sinful reactions. Similarly, the fighting of Arjuna is at the instruction of Lord Shri Krishna. He is not doing it out of his own mental speculation or out of his own sense gratificatory tendencies. So there can be no possible sinful reaction for Arjuna because he is doing his duty like that. Alright, let's go ahead. Text number twenty-two. Are you able to unmute yourself? Okay, as a person puts on new garments, giving up old ones, the soul similarly accepts new material bodies, giving up the old and the useless ones, right? So very, very, these are all analogies that we can relate to, right? Next time when we open the cupboard also, we can remember the, this is how we bring Krishna consciousness as a part of our life, right? Our study of Bhagavad Gita should enable us to transform our lives. It is not about just taking the jnana in the head, right? So next time, even when you open the cupboard, when you are taking some clothes, you should understand Right? Just as one gives up the old clothes to pick up new ones, similarly the soul takes up new bodies. Hmm, and, and then when we drink water, we can think Think that the taste of water is Krishna. Hmm, so in this way, we can always remember Krishna in whatever we are doing, right? In the morning when you wake up, right? Most of us, we pray, we pray to the Surya, right? Surya namaskar, some, some of us do. Or we pray to the, to the sun god, right? At that time, we know that sun and the moon are the eyes of the lord, right? Prabhashmi, Shashi, Surya, yo. I am the, I am the fulgence of the sun and the moon. So in these ways, because of this, how Krishna is enabling us, right? This is, this is the mercy of the lord. Where Krishna is actually allowing us to remember him, right? When we put on new garments, giving up old ones, we don't really cry and crib. Oh, why do I have to give up my old clothes, isn't it? We are happy and excited to wear our new clothes. Similarly, the soul accepts new material bodies, giving up the old and useless ones like that. Alright, Prabhupada. Change of body by the atomic individual soul is an accepted fact. Even the modern scientists who do not believe in the existence of the soul, but at the same time cannot explain the source of energy from the heart, have to accept continuous changes of body which appeared from childhood to boyhood and from boyhood to youth and from youth to old age. We saw this in Dehino Smith ways, right? From old age, the changes to another body. This has already been explained in the previous verse, right? Two point thirteen, we saw this. So the change is happening within the body and at a particular time, the change of body itself takes place. Transference of the atomic individual soul to another body is made possible by the grace of the super soul, very important. Transference of the atomic individual soul to another body is made possible with the grace of the super soul. We know how we are getting our next body, right? How are we getting according to guna and karma, whatever we are? Uh, okay, so, so whatever is our, is our thought process, whatever is the goal of our, or the objective of our actions, those things will determine our next body. And it happens by the mercy of the lord means, it happens with the sanction of the lord. Nothing happens without the sanction of the lord. The super soul fulfills the desire of the atomic soul as one friend fulfills the desire of another. The vedas like the mandaka opanishad as well as the shvetashvathara opanishad. One second, yeah. Yeah, the vedas like the mandaka opanishad as well as the shvetashvathara opanishad. Compare the soul and the super soul to two friendly birds sitting on the same tree. One of the birds, the individual atomic soul, is eating the fruit of the tree and the other bird is simply watching his friend. Of these two birds, although they are the same in quality, one is captivated by the fruits of the material tree, while the other is simply witnessing the activities of the friend, right? We all know this, right? Which is the bird which is actually engrossed and eating the fruits of the material tree? It is the jiva atma or the spirit soul. And who is the other bird which is simply witnessing the activities without being engaged in any activity? It is the super soul or Krishna. Okay, now Kishori Mathi, you want to go ahead and read? Krishna is the witnessing bird from there.
Mathi, Hare Krishna. Thank you.
Hare Krishna, Mathi, yes, go ahead.
Krishna is a witnessing bird and Arjuna is a eating bird. Although they are friends, they are friends, one is still the master and the other is servant. Forgetfulness of this relationship by atomic soul by atomic soul is the cause of one's changing his position from one tree to another or from one body to another. The jiva soul is struggling very hard on the tree of the material body. But as soon as he agrees, he agrees to accept the other bird as supreme spiritual master, as Arjuna agreed to do by voluntarily surrendering to Krishna for his, for instruction. Thus, a body net bird immediately becomes free from all lamentations. the eating bird is fully engrossed with anxiety and moral mischievousness as the enjoyer of the fruits of the tree. But if, but if in some way or often other, other, he turns his face to his friends, the lord and knows his, knows his anyway, sorry, knows his glory at once the suffering bird becomes free from all anxiety, Arjuna has now turned his face towards his eternal friend Krishna and is understanding the Bhagavad Gita from him and thus hearing from Krishna, he can understand the supreme glories of the lord and be free from lamentations. Arjuna is advised here with by the lord not to lament for the bodily change of his old grandfather and his teacher. He should rather be happy to kill their bodies in the righteous, righteous fight so that they may be cleansed at one at once of all reactions from various bodily activities. One who lays down his life on the sacrificial altar or in the proper better fleet is at once cleansed of bodily reactions and promoted to a higher status of life. So there was no cause for Arjuna's lamentation.
Hare Krishna, thank you, Mathi. Yeah, so here, thank you, Mathi. So here, Prabhupada is making a very wonderful point. What is that? Hmm, Prabhupada is saying that one who lays down his life in the sacrificial altar, that means if we are dying, performing our swadharma in consciousness of the supreme personality of Godhead, then such kind of death is very meritorious. Why? Because it will enable such a person to go back home, back to Godhead. If not go back home, back to Godhead, even if one does not perfect one's life, even then one will attain a higher destination, right? Like that, Prabhupada is mentioning here. When gets a better destination means what? Whatever is his desire, why do we perform activities? We perform activities because we want to achieve certain results. When our, the result that we want to achieve is to please the supreme lord and even if you are not completely successful in one life, we will get another body in the next life which will help us further our interest to please the lord. That is why There is no nasha, there is no destruction in the path of devotional service. Simply by rendering devotional service, one will be cleansed of all of the previous, the previous bad karmas, previous sinful reactions, etc. So by this opportunity that Krishna is actually giving to Bishma Pitamaha, to Dronachara, all of them are going to die in the battle, doing their swadharma, right? Fighting in the battle, they will all get better destinations. So Krishna is telling Arjuna, don't worry about their and about their, you know, with the bodily death or the killing of the bodies because you are going to attain a higher destination. So for higher principle, the lower principles can be given up. But the lower principles means even though they are worthy principles like like we saw how, you know, logically understanding some things and explaining to avoid sinful reactions, to feel compassion, all of these are noble, noble principles. But not at the cost of not performing one's dharma. That is the underlying principle that we've been reading, right? Text number twenty-three, who wants to read now? Okay, Karpa Gavali Mathi, go ahead.
Thank you, Mathi.
Marutam means wind.
Translation Translation The soul can never be cut to pieces by any weapon, nor burned by fire, nor moistened by water, nor weathered by the wind. All kinds of weapons, swords, flame weapons, rain weapons, torrent weapons, etc. are unable to kill the spirit soul. It appears that there were many kinds of weapons made of earth, water, air, etc. in addition to the modern weapons of fire. Even the nuclear weapons of the modern age are classified as fire weapons. Formerly there were, there were other weapons made of all different types of material elements. Fire weapons are contracted by water weapons, which are known for, to modern science. Nor do modern scientists have knowledge of torrent weapons. Nonetheless, the soul can never be cut into pieces nor annihilated by any number of weapons, weapons regardless of scientific devices. The mayavadi cannot explain how the individual soul came into existence simply by ignorance and consequently became covered by the illusory energy. Nor was it ever possible to cut the individual souls from the original supreme soul. Rather, the individual souls are eternally separated parts of supreme soul. Because they are anatomical, atomic individual souls eternally sanatana, they are prone to be covered by fire. Prone to be covered by fire.
They're prone to be covered with illusory energy?
Illusory energy. And nor was it ever possible to cut the individual souls from the original supreme soul. Rather, the individual souls are eternally separated parts of the supreme soul. Because they are atomic, atomic individual souls eternally sanatana, they are prone to be covered by illusory energy and thus they become separated from the association of the supreme lord, just as parts of fire. Although one quality with the fire are prone to be extinguished when without, when out of fire, when out of fire. In the varaha prana, the living entities are described as separated parts and parcels of the supreme. They are eternally so, according to Bhagavad Gita also. So even after being liberated from illusion, the living entity remains a separate entity. And this is evident from the teachings of the lord to Arjuna. Now becomes liberated by the knowledge Krishna. Thank you, Mathi. Thank you, Mathi.
Very good. So Arjuna became liberated by the knowledge received from Krishna, but he never became one with Krishna. So there is no, never, as Prabhupada explained as, you know, the green tree and went in, went inside the, the green bird went into the green tree to eat the fruits and then got merged. No, all these, what is analogy? The this bird is continuously engaging in activities and this bird is continuously witnessing the activities. So both the birds have their identity intact all the time. Even after we perfected our life, we go to the spiritual world, there also we engage in the service of the supreme personality of Godhead. At no point in time, his identity merged, right? Because Prabhupada very beautifully explains and elsewhere, how only if there are two people, there can be reciprocation, there can be loving relationship, right? One cannot be, right? If one is just made to sit in one room, you know, given all the food, I eat the food, I, you know, I just enjoy myself, I watch a video. How long can we enjoy like that, right? Our love and relationship with people only makes our life blissful, right? Otherwise, we cannot be blissful being all alone, right? That's why we said that, you know, those people are very successful and walk the path alone, right? They generally find themselves alone at the top. And that is why we see that those who are very successful, generally they are always very lonely, right? It is a different, from being alone is different from being lonely, right? Being alone is a choice. I want to be alone, I want to practice my sadhana, that's a different thing. But being in a group also feeling very lonely, want to speak but don't know what to speak. Oh, what will they tell about me? What will they tell about me? What will they think about me? All those things arises because of a bodily conception of life, right? As long as we know I am the servant of the lord, whatever I am doing, I will do my best and that's for the service of the lord. Does not matter that if somebody else is laughing at me or somebody is scowling at me, it does not really matter, right? Because it is all a passing phase. But as long as we do our best, the lord is pleased with us and that is how we go forward. Okay, let's move forward. Text number twenty-four. Okay, let's move forward, text number twenty-four. Achiyeyo yam, adayoyo yam, kledyo shoshayevacha, nityaha sarvagata, stano, rachaloyam, sanatana. Translation, Prabhupada, Shilpa Prabhupada, Shilpa Prabhupada Ki Jaye. Okay, Rohini Madhaji, you want to read? Okay, go ahead. The individual soul.
Translation, this individual soul is unbreakable and insoluble and can be neither burned nor dried. He is everlasting, present everywhere, unchangeable, immovable and eternally the same. Purpat, all these qualifications of the atomic soul definitely prove that the individual soul is eternally the atomic particle of the spirit whole. And he remains the same atom, atom eternally without change. The theory of monism is very difficult to apply in this case, because the individual soul is never expected to become one homogeneously. After liberation from material contamination, the atomic soul may prefer to remain as a spiritual spark in the effervescent rays of the supreme personality of Godhead. But the intelligent souls enter into the spiritual planets to associate with the personality of Godhead. The word sarvagata, all pervading, is significant because there is no doubt that living entities are all over God's creation. They live on the land, in the water, in the air, within the earth and even within fire. The belief that they are sterilized in fire is non-acceptable, because it is clearly stated here that the soul cannot be burned by fire. Therefore, there is no doubt that there are living entities also in the sun planet with suitable bodies to live there. If the sun globe is uninhabited, then the word sarvagata, living everywhere becomes meaningless. Hare Krishna.
Yeah, yeah, we also saw this, isn't it? Imam vivasvate yogam, roktavanam avyam. So the, uh, so Krishna spoke this science of transcendental knowledge first to the sun god. How can Krishna speak to the sun god if there is nobody in the sun planet, right? He's a god of the sun, means what? Uh, he is in charge of the people who are there in the sun planet. So there exists, uh, population or there exist people and different species also in the sun planet, in the moon planet. And that's why there is the Surya, there is Chandra, right? And also the word here, which is mentioned sarvagata. Sarvagata means there is life everywhere. It is not that only in the earthly planet there is, there is life and the rest of the places there is no life, no. Right? We also see how many people try to go to the Chandra, they have the Chandrayaan expeditions, they want to go to the moon. And when they go there and see, they only find some sand, uh, Prabhupada also mentions in one of his lectures. They get some objects, they get some sand and all saying, I went to the moon, but they've not yet, they've not gone to the moon at all. Right? Even if they touch the surface of the moon, they've not, they don't have the body to actually go inside the moon. Or to go inside the sun, will get either burned or maybe so cold, it may be so cold that we cannot, with our present body, enter into the sun of the moon planets. Hmm, maybe, and Prabhupada also gives example of how when we go to another country, right? We need the visa and everything. But when you go there also, we may land in that particular country, but then if the immigration authorities don't permit us, we cannot go into the country, we cannot explore that country. Similarly, even if we, people are successful in going to the moon, they'll be outside the moon, they will not be allowed entry into the moon. Because we cannot survive in the moon. So that is the reason, what, that is why Prabhupada also gives, uh, sorry, Lord Krishna gives another formula also. Later in the ninth chapter, he says. Yanti deva vritta devan, vitrani yanti pitra vritta, bhutaani yanti bhutejo, yanti madhyajinopimam. Yanti deva, you want to go to the sun planet, you worship Surya Devata, right? You please him. And then maybe in your next life, you will get a, you will get a place in the Surya, uh, in the plan, in the planet of the Surya. Or planet of Chandra, et cetera, et cetera. But he also tells in the same chapter, my, Abraham Guhanaloka, Punaravritino, Arjuna. An intelligent person does not want to go to Surya Loka, Chandra Loka, or, uh, you know, he does not want to remain in the Marthi Loka also. Wants to go back home, back to Godhead. Text number twenty-five. Avyakto yam, achin to yam, avikariyo yam, uchchate, tasmat evam vidhitvaynam, nanu shochi tumar hasi. Translation and Prabhupada, Shilpa Prabhupada, Shilpa Prabhupada Ki Jaye. Yes, Madhaji, go ahead.
It is said that the soul is invisible, inconceivable and immutable. Knowing this, you should not grieve for the body. Purpat, as described previously, the magnitude of the soul is so small for our material calculation that he cannot be seen even by the most powerful microscope. Therefore, he is invisible. As far as the, as far as the soul's existence is concerned, no one can establish his existence experimentally beyond the proof of. Shruti, of vedic wisdom. We have to accept this truth, because there is no other source of understanding the existence of the soul. Although it is a fact by perception, there are many things we have to accept solely on grounds of superior authority. No one can deny the existence of his father based upon the authority of his mother. There is no source of understanding the identity of the father except by the authority of the mother. Similarly, there is no source of understanding the soul except by the studying, by studying the Vedas. In other words, the soul is inconceivable by human experimental knowledge. The soul is consciousness and conscious, that also is the statement of the Vedas, and we have to accept that. Unlike the bodily changes, there is no change in the soul. As eternally unchangeable, the soul remains atomic in comparison to the infinite supreme soul. The supreme soul is infinite and the atomic soul is infi-infinite as, infinite dismal. Therefore, the infi-infinite dismal soul being unchangeable can never become equal to the infinite soul or the supreme personality of Godhead. This concept is repeated in the Vedas in different ways, just to confirm the stability of the conception of the soul. Repetition of something is necessary in order that we understand the matter thoroughly without error. Hare Krishna.
Hare Krishna, thank you, Madhaji. So repetition of something is very important, right? If you do, that is why, uh, even in important verses, there is always repetition, hareer nama, hareer nama. Hareer name eva kevalam, kalon astheva, nastheva, nastheva gathiranyata. Right? There is only harinam, there is only harinam, there is only harinam, there is no other way, nastheva gathiranyata, right? Uh, so in this way, the repetition is always there, right? Uh, why the repetition is there? Because when in those cases where the repetition is there, one has to ensure. Hmm, to follow those instructions is very, very important, right? And another thing what Prabhupada also talks about here, hmm, is the, uh, the soul being the infinitesimal and the supreme soul being infinite, right? Something that is infinitesimal can come under the energy of the infinite, whereas infinite Lord can never come under the, uh, come under the control of anything else, right? So, uh, and one more analogy that Prabhupada gives here, very beautiful, hmm, is, one can know whose father is by checking out with his mother, right? One asks one's mother, who's this one's father and then go ahead with it, right? Similarly, the Vedas are considered to be our mother, right? The Vedas are, whatever, what are the Vedas telling? The Vedas are telling, you know, how the Lord looks like, chintamani, prakrasatma, sukhalpa, viksha, laksha, vritteja, suri, bhirabi, palay, antam. So this is the spiritual world where there are chintamani stones, touch stones, where there are millions of Lakshmi serving that Lord, that Lord is called Govinda. So those are all given in the vedic scriptures, right? What did Krishna tell? What are Krishna's instructions? Is all covered in Bhagavad Gita, about the Dharm, you know, the beauty of the Dharm, et cetera. And how people serve the Dharm with Brahma covers and Brahma samita, all of these are vedic scriptures. The pastimes of the Lord along with his devotees are all covered in Bhagavatam. So all of these scriptures are said to be mother, right? And what does the mother do? The mother indicates who is the father, how one can add one, how one can get connected with the father. Uh, other than by the mother, one cannot know who is one's father. Similarly, without understanding the Vedas, without studying the scriptures, one cannot find out who is the supreme father, right? If you have to know, vedayishu sarveer, ahameva vedyo. So you have to study the Vedas to, in order to understand who is the, uh, who is the creator of the Vedas? Who is the proprietor of the Vedas, right? It is all the supreme personality of Godhead and we can understand that Lord only by study of the scriptures. All right, let's move forward. Uh, now we are on, uh, attachainam, nityaja tam, nityamva, mannyasemritam, tata pitvam, mahabaho, nainam, shochi tumar hasi. Translation and Prabhupada, Shilpa Prabhupada, Shilpa Prabhupada Ki Jaye. If, okay, Anjanam Madhaji, go ahead. If however you think.
If however, you think that the soul or the symptom of life will always be born and die forever, you still have no reason to lament. O mighty armed, Prabhupada, Shilpa Prabhupada, Prabhupada Ki Jaye. Uh, there is, um, always a class of philosophers almost akin, uh, to, uh, to the Buddhists. Uh, who do not believe in, uh, the separate existence of the soul beyond the body. When Lord Krishna spoke, uh, Bhagavad Gita, it appears that such philosophers existed and they were known as the, uh, loka, uh. Loka yad, tikas, and veba, veva, shikas. Such philosophers, um, maintain that, that life symptom, uh, take place at a certain mature condition of material combination. The modern material scientist and, uh, materialist philosopher also think similarly. According to them, the body is a combination of physical element and at a certain stage and the life symptoms. Well, by interaction of the physical and chemical elements. Uh, thus, uh, science of, uh, uh, anthropology. Uh, uh, Hare Krishna.
Yeah, the science of anthropology, the second line of, the science of the anthropology is based on this philosophy.
Philosophy, uh, currently many, uh, pseudo-religions are now becoming fashionable in America are also adhering, uh, to, uh, this philosophy. As the, uh, as are the nihilistic.
Nihilistic, non-devotional.
Non-devotional Buddhist sects. Even if, uh, Arjuna did not believe in the existence of the soul as in the Viveshika philosophy, there, uh, uh, would still have been, uh, no cause. Hmm, uh, for lamentation. No one laments the loss of certain bulk of chemical and stop discharging.
Prescribed beauty. Madhaji, you are not audible. Okay, on the other hand, in modern science and scientific warfare, so many tons of chemicals are wasted for achieving victory over the enemy.
So, uh, so-called soul, uh, or atma, uh, vanishes along with, uh, Madhaji's pro- it's. And with the. Uh, with the, uh, and the, uh, and the, uh, of the body, so in any case.
Better, Arjuna.
In any case, whether, Arjuna accepted the vedic conclusion, but there is an atomic soul or. He did not believe in the exist of the soul, he had no reason to lament according to this theories, uh, science. Uh, since, uh, since there are so many living entities generating out of, uh, matter every moment. And so many of them are being vanquished even, uh, every moment, there is no need to grieve for, uh, for. Just a minute.
There are so many living entities generating out of matter every moment, and so many of them are being vanquished every moment. There is no need to grieve for such incidents. Okay, Madhaji, I know, sir, the voice is breaking.
Generating out of matter, uh, every, every moment and so many of them, them are being vanquished every moment. There is no need to grieve for such incidents if there were no re- worth for the soul. Uh, Arjuna had no reason to be afraid of being affected by sinful reaction due to his killing his grandfather and teacher. But at the same time Krishna, uh, sec- as cars, uh, sar-sarcasmically addressed, um, Arjuna as a mahabaho. Mighty armed, uh, uh, because he, uh, he had, uh, at least did not accept it, the theory of Viveshikas. Which, um, uh, which leaves aside the vedic wisdom as a, uh, shatriya, Arjuna belonged to the vedic culture. And it, uh, behoped, uh, him to continue to follow his principles.
Hare Krishna, thank you, thank you, Madhaji. Okay. So here, uh, Prabhupada is talking about, uh, in both the cases, what are both the cases? One is if Arjuna is thinking, uh, that this material body is composed of chemicals. Hmm, then, then Prabhupada is saying, nobody, uh, actually, uh, sits down and cries, uh, for the loss of chemicals. So if one is understanding is that also, one should not worry about the dying of the body, because the body is just created using some chemicals. What happens if the body dies? That's okay, uh, because, because we already know the soul takes another body at the time of death. Secondly, right? When we think, uh, that this body is all in all, there is nothing else, uh, and there is no soul in anything, this body is all in all. Uh, even in the, even in that, even in that situation, right? Uh, Prabhupada is giving a reason that there is no need for such a person to be afraid, why? Because once it's vanquished, again it, again it will come up, right? Because it's, it's just a, it's just a, uh, material thing, right? So, so every, in every moment, some, something or the other gets created, something other gets annihilated. So why should we give so much of importance to it, right? So whether Arjuna considered himself a soul, uh, who is covered by a material body, or whether he considers the body itself as all in all. Uh, in both the cases, Prabhupada is telling Arjuna, there is no need, hmm, to be, uh, to be grieving or to be lamenting for the loss of. The body, that is the moral of this entire purport, what given by Prabhupada. And Viveshika's theory means what? Hmm, that means they don't take into account the vedic wisdom at all, they simply mentally concoct, right? But we should follow the principles of the vedic culture and in that way, we try to understand what is the soul, what is the bo, what is the human body? And then, uh, how we should utilize the human body, how the body is different from the soul, how the soul is different from the super soul. All of those, uh, differences are actually given in the vedic scriptures. The next couple of verses also is going to talk about the body and the soul difference only. Jata syhidro om rityor, druvam janma, amritas yachap, tasmat apari harierthe, natvam shochi tumar hasi. Translation and Prabhupada, Shilpa Prabhupada, Shilpa Prabhupada Ki Jaye. One who has taken his birth is sure to die and after death, one is sure to take birth again. Therefore, in the unavoidable discharge of your duty, you should not lament, right? Very, very important. This point is the, is perennially coming, time and again, is getting repeated time and again. That means we should understand that this is very, very important, yeah? So we should, it's not that, uh, oh, why, I know that I've, I've read the Bhagavad Gita, why is Krishna repeating so many things, right? It's getting boring, but it's not the point, the point is, are we applying it, right? When there is a death in the family, we do get affected, right? Because as devotees, it's not that, no, it's not that we don't have, uh, any kind of emotions. Right? We're also studying in the Brahmanmurti program also, we're reading the same thing, right? It's not that devotees have no emotions, the devotees know how to detail their emotions in the service of the Lord, right? They know how to perform their duties irrespective of anything else that is happening in their life, right? Why? Because by doing that, one gets elevated from the current situation and lands himself in a better situation. But if one does not perform one's duties, one falls down from wherever one is. That is why the importance of performing the duties is, uh, reiterated, reiterated and reiterated again and again. Okay, Prabhupada, Shilpa Prabhupada, Prabhupada Ki Jaye. Okay, Rohini Madhaji, go ahead. We'll end with you, this was the last verse, yeah, go ahead.
One has to take birth according to one's activities of life. And after finishing one term of activities, one has to die to take birth for the next. In this way, one is going through one cycle of birth and death after another without liberation. This cycle of birth and death does not however support unnecessary murders, slaughter and war. But at the same time, violence and war are inevitable factors in the human society for keeping law and order. The battle of Kurukshetra, being the will of the supreme was an inevitable event. And to fight for the right cause is the duty of a shatria. Why should he be afraid of or aggrieved at the death of his relatives since he was discharging his proper duty? He did not deserve to break the law, thereby becoming subjected to the reactions of sinful acts, of which he was so afraid. By avoiding the discharge of his proper duty, he would not be able to stop the death of his relatives. And he would be degraded to, he would be degraded due to his selection of the wrong path of action. Hare Krishna.
Hare Krishna. So by avoiding the discharge of his proper duty, he would not be able to stop the death of his relatives, right? That's why Krishna is already telling that, nimittamatram, pavashavya chachin, right? Everybody who is born is already born with an expiry date. Now, our material bodies also have been given an expiry date, right? It's only that we don't know the expiry date, right? That does not mean that we're going to live forever. Just like we buy provisions, always I give this example, very relatable, every day, today's scenario, right? Because we get sugar from the, from the provision store, it is written, manufacture date, so and so, expiry date. Say end of this month or whatever may be. Similarly, right? In Kali yoga, people, people say that they live for hundred years. Hardly people live for hundred years these days, only those who have, uh, you know, woken up early in the morning, done spiritual practices. Uh, those kind of people engaged in meditation and all of those people only, they even live even till eighty, ninety, right? Otherwise we can say seventy years itself people get, um, people, uh, even if they don't die, right? We can, we can see that, uh, half, half of their organs are not working, right? Hearing problem is there, seeing problem is there, uh, all that is indicative that the body is deteriorating. And what is the last stage of the deterioration? It is death. Right? Somehow we feel that every, it happened to everybody, but it did not happen to me. That is again another source of illusion. We need to come out of all these sources of illusion by the study of the vedic scriptures, again and again and again. That is why it is never said that, okay, I have completed the study of Bhagavad Gita, right? The study of Bhagavad Gita can never be complete, right? Because the more times we read the Bhagavad Gita, we will get more and more realizations. And when we get more and more realizations, we will live our life according to the principles of Bhagavad Gita, right? So in this case, Prabhupada, very, very beautifully, he is telling Arjuna, right? Do not be aggrieved for the. Do not be aggrieved for the death of your relatives, right? Because somebody who is born is anyway is going to die and I am going to kill. As a matter of time, they may die and I am going to kill them in any way in the due course. But what are you going to do? You're just going to discharge your duty and in this way become an instrument. You cannot stop the death of relatives, just because you decide not to fight this war. You think your kinsmen, your guru, your great grandfather, Vishwam Pithamma, you're all not going to die? Of course they will die and that is a norm for everybody in this material world. Okay, let's complete till verse number thirty. No, I think it's a long part, we will discuss it, maybe we will discuss it at length tomorrow, right? Because this is now, next verse is going to talk about the manifestation and non manifestation, right? So we will take up from verse number twenty eight tomorrow, yeah? Hare Krishna, so we'll do Harinam Shankirtan three, four minutes and then we'll see who are all there and then we will. If anyone has any questions or comments or queries and we can take that for a couple of minutes and then we'll end by say twelve fifty-five or one o'clock like that. Hare Krishna. Namah Om Vishnu Padaya Krishna Prishthaya Bhutale. Sri Mate Bhakti Redanta Swaminidhi Namine. Namaste Saraswate Deva Gauravani Prachadine. Jayah Sri Krishna Chaitanya. Prabhu Nityananda. Sia Advaita Jada Dara Shiva Sadhi Gaurabhakta Vrinda. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna 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 Hare Hare. Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna 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 Hare Hare. Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna 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 Hare Hare. Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama Hare Hare. Jay Gauranitay 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 Jay Gauranitay Jayah. Jayah Jagannath Baladev Subhadra Subhasha. Jayah Balagopal Jayah Balagopal Jayah Balagopal Jayah Balagopal Jayah. Jayah Prabhupada Prabhupada Guru Deva Guru Deva. Gaurahari Bol Gaurahari Bol Gaurahari Bol Gaurahari Bol. Hare Krishna, so everyone can meet themselves now, we have fourteen participants who are staying there till the end of the session today. Thank you very much for joining in, let's see who all we have. Okay, Rajneesh Prabhu is there, Lata Swami Madhaji, Madhaji, I'm seeing for you for the first time today, thank you for joining in. Anita Madhaji, Mahashmi Madhaji, Rohini Madhaji, Karpa Kalii Madhaji, Sudha Madhaji. Okay, rest of all are regular devotees, thank you very much for joining in. Okay, so anyone has any questions or queries, you may use your hands, otherwise we can end the session. Meet you tomorrow morning Brahman Murtha chanting and then eleven thirty. Yes.
Second chapter, second chapter of Madhaji.
Yeah. Yes, yes. Hare Bol, your voice, who's speaking, your voice is cracking.
Madhaji, my sir, Dr. Rata has spoken here.
Yes, yes, Madhaji, go ahead.
Madhaji, I have a doubt, like you know, I mean, we are new to this, I mean, we have been, actually, I have been two years in this case. But still, I, to some reason, I discontinued for some, like you know, for about one to two weeks, I was, I was not chanting at all. Is it comes and the fall down, but I did not break any four regulated principles.
No, no, so that's what, see, see, we have to, we have to gradually increase our rounds, like we are doing, say, one round. Now we do our one round for say four months or six months until we are stable, that we will continue to do our one round regularly, right? And then we move slowly from one round to two rounds to four rounds to eight rounds and then we move to sixteen rounds, right? Once we are established in sixteen rounds, come what may, we have to ensure that we do our rounds, right? Either we are run well or there are some situations where we cannot do our rounds etcetera, then we try to make up for our rounds. Once we are firmly situated and we decide, I am going to chant every day sixteen rounds and somehow or the other, we will make it up for the next day like that we can do. Okay, it's not a fall down, basically, for those who are who have not yet initiated, not got initiated, who are in the starting stages of Bhakti. It does happen, right? Certain things may become overwhelming because of which we can't do certain things, which is perfectly okay. But then you should aspire how we can become better than what we are doing yesterday, right? We need to compare ourselves only with ourselves, right? It's my problem, every Ekadashi, every Ekadashi, Ekadashi, we can do that introspection. Am I wanting to hear more Katha? Am I chanting, do I want to chant more rounds, especially Ekadashi? Am I chanting at least sixty, twenty rounds, twenty-five rounds, thirty-two rounds, sixty-four rounds etcetera? So we have those groups also, right? If you want, you can join that our Ekadashi group, where if you chant say like forty rounds, right? Then you get into the groove of chanting, right? So in that way, in the association of devotees, when they say, okay, I have completed thirty-two rounds, I have completed forty rounds. You also get inspired, okay, I also want to chant. We help each other, ensure that we follow the regulated principles and we also chant our minimum sixteen rounds. In the association of devotees, one can never fall down. But if you try to do it alone, then there may be chances because our mind will trick us. Our minds will say, are you again not keep it, it's okay. One day if you don't do, what will happen, tomorrow you can do, right? But in the association of devotees where you are reporting to your counselor that I am chanting, then if you don't chant on a particular day, you will be questioned, isn't it? So in that way, we keep that, we keep that control check for hours, it's for our benefit, okay, Madhaji?
Thank you, Madhaji, Hare Krishna.
Okay, Granth Raj Shri Madh Bhagavad Gita Ki, Jai, Shri La Prabhupada Ki, Jai, thank you, Hare Krishna.
Hare Krishna, Madhaji, Madhaji, do you have time, Madhaji?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Madhaji, do you have time, Madhaji, can I ask?
Yes, 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 Madhaji, Anita Madhaji.
My question was like how to check our progress in this movement, Madhaji, like we have been doing. But still that we are chanting also, but still that taste in chanting is not coming yet. So it's like I will take the beat bag and sit okay when I will finish, so that thing is there. So how to check our progress, Madhaji, we are hearing of the Katha.
Yeah, so the eagerness, the eagerness will tell you, like Prabhupada gives an example in Bhagavad Gita only. Just like a hungry person, if he eats nice foodstuffs, he's automatically feeling energized. He's automatically feeling, you know, stomach is full, I don't have to ask anybody, is my stomach full like that, right? Similarly, if you are able to continue with chanting sixteen rounds, then somewhere we have the taste. Although it's not be, it is not that, oh, I want to chant all the time, we may not be at the level of Rupa Goswami. But if you are chanting for minimum sixteen rounds, twenty rounds every day, prescribe minimum rounds. That means Krishna is enabling us to do it, we can't do anything of our own accord. You cannot say that I got up on my own, right? It is by the Krishna's will that we've even woken up in the morning. Everything happens with the sanction of the Lord, but the Lord sees our endeavor. And seeing our desire, the Lord will give by his mercy, you will get the taste also, right? At one point in time, I always give the example that, you know, I used to not even get out of the bed without having my bed coffee. That was even until I finished my twelve standard and doing my CA, those days, right? Work hard, party harder like that, go for a movie every Friday. Nowadays, all those things we've given up, right? They've all left us, now even if somebody pays me a million rupees and tells me, have coffee or I will not have it, right? Because because my life has got transformed into it. That is why they say that people who perfect their lives, right? They don't consider, that's why we call it sadhana. Here in sadhana bhakti, that means we don't have a taste for it, but still we do it. Because we have given promise of a spiritual master, we do it. And because we continue to do it with sincerity and determination, the Lord will be merciful. Like Mother Yasoda, she ran behind Krishna, she was not able to catch him. But seeing, seeing her continue the efforts in respect to of, you know, becoming breathless and, you know, her flowers are falling down. She's feeling, she's sweating, she's running, she's panting, yet she's not giving up her endeavor, she's still continuing to run. And then after considerable amount of effort, then only Krishna is allowing himself to be born, right? So we will all get the taste, we will always want to chant twenty-four hours of the day, but we are in the queue, we are on the way, right? Like Rita Sevani Madhaji was mentioning the other day, you know, why are devotees having so much of anarthas, right? She gave an example of how all of us have prasadam, right? And we're all standing in the queue, right? The hand is dirty, we have not yet washed our hands, but we are still in the queue. Right? After the person in front of us washes his hands, next will be our turn. So we are all in turn, right? We will reach the destination, we will be cleansed of all of our anarthas. And then that state, we'll be able to chant Hare Krishna very nicely, yes. So we are on the right path, we have to trust the process, that's why Rupa Goswami also says, uttaha, nuscha, and along with that, dhairya, patience. Enthusiasm, determination and patience and with that, our destination is sure to be attained, okay, Madhaji?
A little bit of confidence is there, okay, somewhere I'm doing something at least. So one more question, Madhaji, we have our BV leaders, right? So Bhakti Riksha leaders are there. So is that our Bhakti Riksha leaders are our Siksha guru, we have to consider like that or we can just have that mind mindset that they are our leaders? But we can have some other Siksha gurus also.
See, whoever inspires you in Bhakti is a Siksha guru. Whoever inspires, you can have many Siksha gurus, like for example, if somebody dresses the deity is very nicely in the temple. That person can help you learn that particular aspect or that particular art. If somebody is very good in chanting, early morning finishes all the rounds, you want to associate with that person so that you also get the enthusiasm and complete your rounds. So diksha gurus one, who connects you to the parampara, siksha gurus, you can have as many, right? But provided you serve all of them, right? It is not that I learn, but I don't serve, the reciprocation has to be there always. Whenever you consider as your siksha guru, you should serve them, you should inquire from them, you should learn from them, like that. So the reciprocation is there, then you can have many, many siksha gurus.
Okay, okay, Madhaji, because I had this doubt, because I was told that whoever is your BV, I was, it was like forcing me. Whoever is your BV leader, you have to consider them as your siksha gurus, I was like, what, how can I do like that?
See, one is having a reporting authority, like for example, you have one reporting authority, otherwise, if you have say, why do they say that? See, if I have some ten siksha gurus, for example, right? I already have a way in my mind, like Arjuna also here now, gives so many reasons why I don't want to do my duty. If you have many siksha gurus, we'll ask all of them, even if one of them tell, okay, do whatever you want, then we'll follow our mind and do it. And then we have got a sanction in our mind. Right? So we don't want to give way to our mind, that is why we have a particular authority structure, right? The temple president to the temple I go is the final authority, I may have many siksha gurus, different people will have different opinions. But when different people have different opinions, we have one authority, which is the final authority. Right? Which will be our diksha guru at all times, but otherwise it can be the temple authority, the temple president is the authority. There are conflicting use between different siksha gurus. Then we have to have one authority who will have the, like we have the high court and the supreme court, isn't it? Right? The supreme court is the final authority, like that, the diksha guru is the final authority, right? If there are many conflicts not able to resolve, then you go to the diksha guru, right? Otherwise, we can solve at the siksha guru level, right? When there's conflict, then we go ahead, because Bhakti life is not black and white, there are a lot of shades of gray. Where you need to apply your intelligence, we need to take guidance and sometimes, you know, you're not able to get guidance and we go to the higher level. So that's, that's okay, but you keep them, you keep them, along with them you go. You don't, you don't disregard any person, you don't say you're not, you know, for this, I'm not listening to you, no, not like that. In a collaborative spirit, right? Prabhupada also said how we cooperate, so we cooperatively we go, we agree that, you know, there are conflicting opinions, let us take, let us take the view of a higher authority, like that, like that we can be now, we can be now.
Clear, clear, Madhaji, thank you so much, thank you so much.
Thank you very much, dear devotees, meet you all tomorrow morning.
Madhaji, Madhaji, today's my birthday, so I seek your blessing.
Hare Krishna, so let's all chant one time the Pansitathu mantra, Sri Etem Shreer Krishna Mahamantra, Happy Christmas Lord Sri Krishna. Please have Prabha Madhaji keep very good health and always engage in the service of Guru and Gauranga. Jai Sri Krishna Chaitanya Prabhu Nityananda. Sia Advaita Jada Dara Shiva Sadhi Gaurabhakta Vrinda. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna 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 Hare Hare. Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna 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 Hare Hare. Hare Rama, Rama Rama Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna 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 Hare Hare. Hare Rama, Rama Rama Hare.
Do you have any daily reporting group also, Madhaji?
Thank you so much, Madhaji, for your.
They also have a daily reporting, I will share that, share that link of the WhatsApp group. So we have a daily reporting which is, which is hearing and then chanting and then also Mangalarti, Tulsiarti, Narasimhaarti. And then you also have for reading, so like that we have certain parameters which we do every day. We are supposed to do all of that every day, isn't it? That will be our daily sadhana report, so I'll share the link of that group and then devotees can join, all right?
Madhaji, I want to ask, morning Mangalarti, after Mangalarti, Narasimha Deva and Tulsi, Madhaji, we have to do or before that?
No, no, first it starts with Mangalarti, it's a temple program that we try to replicate at home also. So it's Mangalarti, Narasimha Arti, Tulsi Arti and then there's chanting and shikshastika prayers. And then there is chanting of sixteen rounds of Hare Krishna Mahamantra and then seven thirty Darshan Arti. Of course, at home standards, we don't have to be very strict to the time, you know, maybe it gets a little bit, you know, at least in our home, we do the, we do the chanting first. And then, you know, my daughter goes to, goes to school at seven, so six forty-five, we do the Mangalarti, all of us together, we do the Mangalarti like that. So for in the temple standard, she is supposed to be at four thirty AM. But home standards, you know, because I wake up early and till six forty-five, we have our Mangalarti, I mean, what do you call our Japa session going on? So six forty-five ends and six forty-five, we go and do our Mangalarti, six forty-five to seven like that. So you can fix your home standards and you follow that strictly, right? It's not that one day do at four o'clock, Monday do at twelve o'clock, Monday do at seven o'clock, no, it's not like that, it's not according to what is convenient for us. But it is according to our, we have, we fix some principles and we follow it. Because we're doing it for Lord's pressure, not for our own, you know, I did, I did, no, it's not that, right?
I do it at four thirty, I do it four thirty.
Perfect, best. If you're able to do it, sustain it for, sustain it according to your, then it's perfectly fine, right? But if you want to do it as a family, then you do it at six thirty, but we fix it at six thirty, six forty-five or seven o'clock. You don't extend it, whenever I want, I will do like that. But one odd, one odd days, it's still okay, it's still okay if you're in some exigencies there, some exam is there, not able to do, we can do a little later, but that should not become a practice.
No, no.
Yeah, Hare Krishna, Shri La Prabhupada Ki, Jai Gaurav.
Thank you, everybody.